One of you please stand for the pledge.
Let's leave it to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Today is Monday, May 3rd, 2021. The time being at 7:00 PM. The meeting in Greensburg City Council is called to order at this time. Police violence by chronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests participants in this meeting to complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table back for a brief police call roll.
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Daryl Bowling.
Here.
Vieta McKenzie.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Rick Gansler.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from our April 5th, 2021 meeting. Are there any additions, edits, or corrections? If not, take a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Rick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I'm standing by both Daryl and Kevin. Old business. Sarah Hamer, building commissioner, second reading ordinance 2021-3, which is the annexation for the hospital.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, this is just up for the second final reading this evening. Anyone has any questions?
Any further questions for Sarah? If not, take a motion to approve 2021-3, second reading. A motion's been made by Kevin, and it's a second. Second by Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you, Sarah. Up next, Brian Robbins, Director of the Economic Development Corporation of Greensburg County, ordinance 2021-09, Broad Van Rade. Can you read it through again?
Yes, this is a, some of you guys might remember it. Back in December of 2018, the city council passed a resolution, or an ordinance, I should say, establishing the city of Greensburg as an Indian and Broad Van Rade community. Due to possibility of move, what have you. We do not have a record of that ordinance actually in the files, so I'm talking with the clerk's office. We thought it'd be best to just go ahead and pass it again, so it's official, and I can submit it to the state, and we can continue that process. So essentially, what this ordinance does is outline a point of contact, which in December it was going to be me, and just allows for an expedited process, where telecommunications company to come in and solve fiber and that sort of thing. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. In talking to the, the building commissioner, or she said, the planning director, at that time Cathy Reynolds, in the office, I was happy to share that the city already has mentioned this already, and all this already, so it was really not a big jump for the city to actually establish this. So, and again, it's already been proven by the council, so we have a written record of it.
It is something necessary for a grant.
Yes, well.
Any questions for Brian?
I guess maybe not for Brian, but maybe for Brenda and Josh. Do we need to do an audit of that any time period to see if there's other ordinances that aren't on file that were approved during those time periods?
Jamie, during that time period, during that time period, the book, the ordinance book, shows that that ordinance was not signed. It was not added to any of the Excel reports that we have, and the possibility that it could have, that when it was passed, the minutes showed that it was passed during that timeframe. So, we went to look at the other, in our file cabinets, for what was not on digital, and those are in the back of the pot. And so, we're hoping that we might be able to find it, but it is not in any records that we have, other than that the minutes showed it as passing, but it's the, the ordinance book does not show that it was signed, or that it was passed, or any of those issues.
I guess I'm just saying, any of the ordinances we passed, maybe.
They are. They have to be sent to, we have to record them, you know, most of them are being recorded, and tomorrow morning, the ones that you are passing tonight are digitally processed and filed.
Jamie, I think, so we haven't found anything else?
That's, that's what I'm asking. Not, not that, what may have been passed during that time period.
Yeah.
But we also can't access the tangible files at the moment, that were put away.
Right. But everything else is there and has been digitally uploaded.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, after we do our first vote, I'll ask for, so just suspend the rules, because Brian needs this rather quickly. So is there a motion to pass 2021-09 on first reading? Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Making a motion, we suspend the rules, ordinance 2021-09.
Motion to suspend the rules has been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
And I'll make a motion, we pass 2021-09 on the third, or second reading.
Motion's been made to pass 2021-09 on second reading by Jamie, second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, before you leave tonight, please be sure we sign this one. Up next, conversation, discussion of the tax abatement guidelines that have been updated.
Yeah, does everybody have, if I get a copy of that with them? This has been a project from the Tax Abatement Committee for the last, I'd say probably year or so, more, to essentially outline our tax abatement process, put it down on paper, and also provide a guideline for evaluation of certain projects that came before us. What this is, is to provide any sort of businesses that are coming to, to invest in our community, or expand in our community, to know exactly what to expect, and, and why the expectations are there, because all tax abatements are a contract between the taxpayer or the local government and, and the, the business. And each need to hold up their end of the contract, and what this does is outline all the expectations that we made, both the local government and the business, and hopefully provide some sort of, again, guidelines, not an ordinance or anything like, of guidelines, to help evaluate the respective project.
Both Councilman Vieta and Councilman Jamie and I worked on this, along with Brian and Board Works member Glenn Tebby. We've been working on it for, like Brian said, for quite a while. We think this would be a pretty comprehensive and compatible packet that we've seen other communities put together as well, and sort of modeled off of that and tailored it for us. So, we're excited to have some guidelines to present when we're talking with those companies and others who want to invest with sort of an official type of item. Questions? What we're asking for is a motion of support, and of this as this body's sort of government document on tax payments. Of course, the Tax Abatement Committee still exists. It will come through there, go through the whole process like it has before, and still come to you all as the deciding body for that. No further questions? Okay. Take a motion to pass a motion of support in favor of the tax abatement guidelines as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Daryl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, thank you much, Brian. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, Councilman Fleetwood has ordinance 2021-10, Regulations for Golf Card Usage on City Streets. He would like to present.
And your packet was the ordinance that we mentioned, and what it does, it allows the, it allows property equipped and insured golf carts to be driven on city streets. They will be looked through the same process as the UTVs did a year ago. They'll go to the police department, they'll be inspected, they'll be given a license plate, and then that way their car is proven to have all the necessary requirements and the insurance, and then every year it has to go back for pre-inspection. This is something that's been done at other communities around us. Actually, when I talk to different police chiefs from Franklin, from Mink Castle, most of them did golf carts first, and then came back later and did UTVs, and we kind of did the other way with UTVs first. And I've had multiple conversations with the chief of police, and as of the date, there's really no issues with the UTVs usage on the streets. It's been pretty, it's been well received. It's been well received by the UTV community, and I think this will be well received by the golf cart community.
Okay. Any questions? This does have a fine associated with it. There's money involved, so we can't necessarily suspend the rules for it, so we both have to have two readings. But, questions? Chief, anything from your perspective that we haven't addressed before creation of ordinance?
Now, like I said, I know we came up with the UTV. The only thing I would say would be, the only concern is the safety portion. I know they're not built as well as UTVs, but I did express my concern to the councilman about, I would definitely tell my officers that there's going to be no warnings. If there's juveniles out riding on these golf carts, we're going to tow, and we're going to immediately cite them. And I don't think this is one where you guys do a lot of enforcement, because unfortunately, right now, they're not obeying. So, there's going to be an immediate tow, and that, as long as people realize that.
Okay.
So, are you having an issue with it now?
Yeah. Yeah, nobody pays attention to it, especially the ones in your cul-de-sacs, and that they let their eight-year-old kids with twenty of their friends hanging off of it. And, I mean, it's, it's a constant issue in our cul-de-sacs, and that's why I said, I have no problem passing it. Like I said, we're going to definitely enforce, and then if they do not pay three of those citations, then we're going to tow it, and the city owns it until they pay their fines, because we have to have some type of teeth behind our ordinances that we currently don't, or we do not have currently. So, that one is one thing we're going to do, is if they do not pay citations, we're going to tow it, and we own it until they pay.
I mean, I think in a way, this helps us with that, because now it gives you, gives you something in writing, saying, hey, this is it. How many UTV permits, roughly?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three. Thank you.
And I will say, we have not had one complaint from anybody on UTVs. I told Councilman Fleetwood that the only issue we have was somebody riding a UTV, actually stopping one of our officers, and didn't realize they could travel down Main Street. For a period of time, they didn't realize they had to actually cross it, but other than that, we've had no issues, so. I just worry about the age thing, especially with golf carts, so.
Do you think that the sixteen-year age limit, you should be higher than that? I don't see how you can really get away with, if they're a licensed driver, they're a licensed inscriber.
I think you go with what the state of Indiana has set forth right now, and that, like I said, it's just going to be up to our officers to make sure we're enforcing it, not, because like I said, right now, when we try to enforce it, I'm automatically getting a phone call first thing Monday morning about me picking on the poor kids, and all they're doing is trying to have fun on golf carts that understand the safety measure of it. So. It's like fireworks. It's a, it's always a good way.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't have a problem trying it, but if it gets out of hand, I would be the first one to say.
Okay.
And I think it's more for just the safety standpoint of it. I mean, it is, they only go how, now, I did read in here that they're only allowed on roads that have a speed limit of thirty miles per hour.
On city streets. I mean, we can talk about safety, we can talk this, but we've got people riding bicycles down the middle of the streets now. This gives those people who will follow the rules of legal avenue to write, and multiple communities have put these regulations into effect, and have success with them. So.
I kind of play it to the, the safety part. It does concern me a bit, having some of the regulations that you have in there may help that, but I'm willing to give it a shot, but as Vieta said, if there are any issues, I'll be the second one to say something I was going to say at first.
As mentioned, we will have to have a second reading on it, so if there's no other comments or questions at the moment, we will have this back before skin in a month, but I would entertain a motion if you'd like.
So move.
Yeah, motion to approve 2021-10?
Second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you all. Up next, Brenda Winger, Clerk of Trade for the City, ordinance 2021-06, ARP Fund.
ARP is a grant that we're going to be getting from the federal government, and I have been notified by the State Board of Accounts that we needed to have an additional fund number, and it needed to be from one, numbered from 176 to 199, and so we chose, Michael Peaper, Betsy Wiley, and I chose 176, so it would be the first one. So, that's the reason we'd like to establish this grant, this fund number, and also because the funds are supposed to be beginning maybe eleven, it'll be starting the distribution of those funds. So, if possible, if I could get this passed, and then passed on a second reading tonight, we have the fund available for when the monies come in.
That's expected, that's the American Rescue Plan, that's what ARP stands for, and that is expectedly this month, as Brenda mentioned. Any other questions on 2021-06? If not, take a motion to approve on first reading?
So move.
Motion's been made by Daryl, second by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Making a motion that we suspend the rules on 2021-6, for second, second reading.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Making a motion, we pass 2021-6 on a second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie to do second reading of 2021-06. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay. Next, we have 2021-07, Additional Appropriation.
I'll go ahead and explain this. It's for the fire department. The fire chief discussed this last year, and, and the board chose to make one payment, but we chose to wait to this year because we had one year of interest free, so therefore, we need to transfer these funds to make a one-time payment and save the city over $20,000 in interest by making a one-time payment. So, that's the reason I'm requesting these additional funds.
These were the radio trials.
Correct. These were the eight hundred radios that were passed, financed through, with interest free for twelve months, and then we decided that we would go back and just pay it off. The money was there, but we would do the payment plan, and first payment has now come due.
Make a motion, pass.
Motion's been made by Rick to pass 2021-07.
Second.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Up next, 2021-08, another additional appropriation.
And this is for capital outlay.
This was for the second round of COVID funding we received last year. You may recall, it was a communications, COVID communications grant. Those funds were now made available to us. We have to move them from the funds they are deposited into, into our general fund in order to expend them, and that's all we're asking for, is the transfer of $38,660.
Motion to approve 2021-08.
Motion's been made by Daryl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Up next, Chief Stermer, Training and Guest Speaker.
Good evening. Before you have in your packet, a quote from a gentleman named Steve Frazabowski, who is a chief officer in Santa Clara, California. He is a nationally known professional development and oral promotion preparation speaker for the fire service. When I took office a little over a year ago, there was a lot of talk about local talent, trying to get local talent prepared to take this position and other positions, and part of that plan is to do that. When we had internal promotions last year, they, the fire department went through a, a written test, as well as an oral promotion done by chief officers from around the area, and their scores were very low, when they were scored percentage-wise on their oral interview skills, showing that we need to improve that, that oral interview skill. And part of doing this is bringing Chief Frazabowski in for two days, and doing some officer professional development for the thirteen officers that are on the department, as well as half a day of oral interview preparation, as we will be having fire department promotions coming up here within the next three months, as well as a kind of rejuvenate the spirit of the fire service in a pride and ownership type of speech for the second half of the second day. Currently, we're in working with him on potentially doing like a community greatness speech, or the afternoon slash evening that he is here between his two days, and get some outside perspective on the community as well as the fire service. The amount is all encompassing, so travel, airfare, per diem, food, hotel, all that is included in there. Currently, I do have funds in, in budgeted for, to afford some of this. However, I am looking at a Decatur Community Foundation grant that is specific for the Decatur County Fire Departments that would allow us to offset some of that cost. So, we're trying to offset some of that cost, so we can maintain some of our line item training budget as well. This will be, this training opportunity will be open to the other county fire departments, so we feel that it's a good fit for the Community Foundation grant. It is a separate grant. The Community Foundation gives, obviously, to very many people who apply. The fire department has our own separate line item for Decatur County Fire Departments, and that's what we're looking to tap into.
And this, this is a little bit of type of the sense that the Board of Works is already busted, so it's a little to the, to the agreement.
Correct, correct.
Which that board does, you're not asking for the additional funding, so for the, for the council, it's a little more of a information.
Formality and informational.
Yeah, a little bit of information about what's happening. Any questions for the chief on that? I think it's a great opportunity. I know, I appreciate your investment in the department, and we're looking forward to that.
Do you have any, any dates?
I do. June 3rd and 4th. So I wanted to bring it to the board now, so we're not in a two to three day, like I hope. That way, travel arrangements can be made, and things like that can be said in stone.
Anything else for the chief on that? Okay. What about your strategic plan?
So, the second one is just an informational thing, that within the strategic plan is kind of the roadmap for the fire department over the next five years. This was a plan that was started when I first took office, and really just got to finish up, thanks to COVID response and just other pressing issues. But then here is, this is a public document that will be put on our website, so anybody will be able to download it. The, the really integral part of this is really starting on page eight, nine, ten, and then the end of the document. So, our, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, as well as critical issues and service gaps that we have within our department, and then how we plan to fix those critical issues and service gaps. That starts on page 10, as you'll see, the goals, objectives, and critical tasks. This is just a roadmap for myself, the officers that serve our department, as well as any other future administrative chiefs that will come after me, to pick this document up and be able to take off from where we left off. This allows us to not rest on our morals, and actually, we continue to plan. If we're not sure where, which way, direction to go, we can consult the strategic plan, like many departments and organizations do, and that will give them kind of some guidance and some of where to go. So, some of these are very lofty goals and very lofty things. Others are a little bit more achievable, which is to keep the energy up, and to keep things moving forward as a department, as we progress. But this document really is just for you to have and to reference as we continue to, to ask for improvements within the fire department. We're going to make sure and hold each other accountable that they do align with these things that we're doing. I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Done just things and put it again?
Appreciate it. Thank you. A lot of work in it. Good luck. Got to have a challenge.
You, you go.
I think the chief did a great job on this document. Can you share? Any other questions?
Well, just maybe a comment for the chief, and for you, your entire department. The fire training day that you put together was fantastic.
Thank you.
You guys did an excellent job. Every member of your department was, I mean, you guys did an awesome job. That was, I think there was a huge benefit from something like that. It was well done, well put together, and I, I appreciate it. I think you guys did an awesome job.
Great. Thank you. Look forward to doing it sometime in the future. Thank you.
Up next, Street Commissioner Mark Clutter Camper, on an update with Community Crossings and Match and Grant Projects.
Good evening. Probably a bunch around town. We have started the last of the 2020 CCMT projects. We've dealt with portions of Sixth Street, Am Ryan Drive, Versailles Street, Randall, and most of the, the Jamie Creek East and Creek West. Just want to make you aware, you'll remember last year on First Street, we ran into some subgrade issues once we opened the street up. We have also encountered some of those over here on Versailles, especially the block between Ireland and Bopper. It's early in the year. We have funding in place. We're not here to ask for any money today, but we just want to make you aware. When we get ready to go to CCMT 2021-2, applications here in July, we're probably going to spend a little money we had there, so we might be back for an additional couple of amounts of expense. I did talk to the contractor this afternoon. To give you an idea, we ran about $23,000 over the budget, but for the benefits of what we'll get out of it, to keep the road together, it's what's better. The other thing, Monday, last Monday or Tuesday, the governor announced a round one funding for 2021. We were awarded $75,373.15, which is half the amount of what we proposed for some micro-surfacing for three residential subdivisions, and the same product that we used last year when we done the NGLs. If you've been out there to see that. Unfortunately, we had about the $209,000 worth of proposed free resurfacing, and they choked up the fund at this time. So, we'll carry those projects over and add those to the other big gap for the second round this year. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A couple items from my office. We've got in your packets a memorandum of understanding with Bird Scooters, which is, if you're not familiar with, it's sort of a ride and share, a scooter sharing service, that had become pretty popular over the last couple of years. I've talked with them, they're based in California, but I've talked with them about how small communities like ours can be a part of their network. How they typically work is that they have a group of people that work to pick them up and repair them and put them out, move them around. So, their new, newer business model is related to smaller communities where they find an independent contract. where they find an independent contractor whose job is to set them out in the morning, move them around, repair them, charge them at night, pick them up. What they, that's not what we're doing, we're getting in the scooter business. But, uh, what they do ask from us is that if they find one of these individuals to run this business model in our community, then we have, uh, an understanding of what they're doing. And in, in here, you can see, you know, they've talked about insurance and the numbers and the things that are sort of related to that. I don't know, Chad, if you've reviewed it much, or Chris gave you the download. But Chris has reviewed it, um, his, do you want to comment?
I would say Chris reviewed it, he said, tracked what he expected. Didn't pass much else along.
And, and I think part of it to, and that's what he told me as well, you know, that we're not committing any funds. We're not saying anything, that we're not, we're just not going to pick them up and put them in the garbage truck as soon as they hit the street. But if we have issues, we can work through that. Of course, if we need to, we can do it in advance, like we just did with the, the golf cart concept. But Bird has their own requirements. They do have to follow state law, which means they're not technically supposed to be written on the sidewalk and things like that. I think it's a unique opportunity. It's not our job or my job to discuss feasibility, right? Ours is just to say that we would be open to this idea. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to, um, maybe be a, a smaller rural style market for something that is very popular and, and trendy amongst individuals who would like to probably attract to our community. Questions?
Just a comment, uh, and I understand we're probably not comparing apples to apples here, but I know in Indianapolis, they have this same thing. The thing that I did notice in Indianapolis is the scooters are laying everywhere, which is somebody finished to reach their destination, they lay it over and wait for someone else to come to get it up. I would be concerned, uh, that that could be a problem here. We spent a lot of money downtown with the aesthetics that we have there and the scooters laying over. And even in the, the neighborhoods, um, also experienced, they're not supposed to ride among the sidewalks, but I, I was ran off the sidewalk by a couple of, so, just a couple of concerns that I have that I think we need to take into consideration on that.
Yes, those have all been issues. I asked about the sort of the discarding of those on my call with them. Part of their solution to that is when they first started this company, they just sort of dumped them into the markets, right? Like Indianapolis, they just threw them out on the street and said, there, that's it. They're sort of, this style that they're working on now is more of a business for an individual, right? That individual makes profit off of rides and making sure that they're in the right places and that they work and that they look attractive to users. So they are hopeful that that will help diminish the sort of discarded appearance. Now, does that mean that they won't fall over or that people won't throw them over? No. But I, they have kind of tried to address that the best that they can. But it's definitely a real concern. Any other comments, questions? I guess, I mean, again, it's one of those things that we're not, we're not committing funds. We can always go back on this if we're wanting to try some things, maybe give them the opportunity to find, uh, a local entrepreneur to partner with and, and see how it goes. If we feel the need to get more involved, um, we can. Nothing else? I take a motion if somebody would be willing to make one? Okay.
We can't cross that bridge when it kind of happens?
Well, so part of what they're asking for is they don't want to go through the process of finding the entrepreneur, bringing them here, getting them all set up, and then for them to put them out on the streets and for us to, to throw them all in the back of a garbage truck and say, there goes your scooters. So they, they are sort of providing, you know, we will, they will provide insurance. They will do this, they will do this. In exchange, we will not just throw a fit when they get here. Now, I think we could work with whoever the entrepreneur is, uh, to maybe address some of those items. And of course, we could always enforce current law and implement ordinances to help that. It's not, this is not preventing us from doing that. And in the meantime, if we want to start working on one, intending that they're coming, we could do that as well. If we'd like some more time, happy to table it, or if it's just a never going to happen type of thing?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we table this to our next meeting. It gives us some time to think about it.
Sure.
Consider whether or not we want to just create an ordinance around it or not really at all. But at least it gives us some time to think through those things.
Okay. I think they still would need the MOU eventually, uh, to help with their side of things, but happy to work on that as we see fit. Jamie's made a motion to table that conversation. Sort of second? Seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay.
For me, I do have one quick question. Did this, this business model, have they put this in place in the other communities? See, they've put it in place where it's actually functioning?
According to their map, there's only two settings in here. Blowing the green stuff.
And, and, uh, in Indianapolis.
Indianapolis.
The way it was explained to me was that this is a brand new concept and that they sort of went through the demographics, population, locations, et cetera. And we were, they, they reached out to me. Yeah. But they're trying to get into markets this size for that last mile, one mile, two miles transportation. Okay. Um, up next, we have a request from Wilhelm Construction. Uh, this is for the water treatment plant. It was a request submitted by them and it, they would like to be compensated for the week that Decatur County was in the red, a restricted travel zone for COVID time. They claim that they had $13,000 worth of damages because we stopped work on the project. There's a lot of discussion that's been had around this. I brought it to you all, if you want to use COVID funds to pay them. Uh, they are working on a city project. They are located, obviously, in Decatur County, working on this project. Decatur County ceased all non-essential operations. I deemed the water plant construction project not to be essential because we were forcing other industries, um, to close and, uh, projects to be halted. They argued that water was an essential service. And I argued that they were constructing water and not producing water or drink, making water safe. But yet, here's their request. So it is in your court as to whether you would like to compensate them for their seven-day delay of $13,000, um, from COVID funds or other funding sources.
Do we have a legal opinion from our attorney? Chris about it yet?
I, yes, but I won't really speak for him, but it's.
I'm serious, I, he hasn't truly briefed me on this much, so I can't speak for what exactly Chris has already analyzed. Um, under these circumstances and the emergency orders in effect, I think there's an argument that everything that was done by the city was rightful. Doesn't stop the potential for lawsuits down the road and then fighting it out for who knows how long. But, um, Chris, I think it sounds like it's dug a little deeper than that and, uh, probably just to get the final opinion from him with maybe more of the facts in play. But at the outset, it appeared to be a rightful decision that was made at the time. But that doesn't stop the eventual lawsuit that will come down the height from it.
Yeah, do we want to risk that for $13,000?
It, it's been on my head as well, that's why it's here.
I mean, what about the other businesses that lost money too? Are we responsible for that?
We, we do have a contractual obligation with Wilhelm because they are working on our project. Um, I, I won't speak for Chris. I, I'm not trying to avoid your interest.
I guess, I'd, I'd like for Chris to maybe look at the contract we had with Wilhelm and then determine whether or not there was something identified in that contract that would make us liable for that, right? I can do something.
Presumably clauses here. I was going to say presumably the contract has certain clauses that would excuse performance and the acts of God and other type provisions that make it where you wouldn't be liable. But that would be a contract specific analysis. It probably gets to be looked at for this final decision.
Does it hurt to put this off for another month?
Rick, do you have any, Rick, before we go any further, do you have any comment or insight you'd like to make on that?
I do not. You've covered pretty good. Thank you.
I just make a motion that we table it for next month. And then that way we can talk with Chris and get his opinion after he's reviewed the contract to ensure, is there a clause in there that, that your excuses or holds us liable to that? And then we can make that determination.
Motion's been made to table by Jamie, seconded by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We will move on to the next, uh, topic, which is the funding request that I mentioned last week from, uh, or last month from Greensburg Community Schools. And they are requesting that, uh, we reimburse or donate to them $30,000 for their general operations and cleaning, and then $5,000 in loss revenue, um, from COVID for athletic events. The Decatur County Commissioners did provide Decatur County Community Schools with, uh, $60,000 and $10,000 to those respective divisions. And then they, um, provided Greensburg Community Schools $30,000 and $5,000. And they passed us with making up the rest of that. So that's where those numbers came from. There are funds available in the COVID funds if you so choose. Any other questions?
We need to do that through, through ordinance.
You said that the, you, the county did?
The county did, um, $60,000 to the Decatur County Community Schools, $30,000 to the Greensburg Community Schools. And then the county did $10,000, I believe, to Decatur County Schools. And they gave $5,000 to the Greensburg Schools. They did receive COVID funds based on population. So they receive funds and we receive funds, um, city residents coming towards Decatur County residents and Greensburg residents. And no, we do not have to do a reservation or an ordinance because it's already appropriated, it was appropriated when we put it into the fund. So it's already appropriated. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Daryl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay. Jamie, would you like to do our update from the Board of Works, please?
We, uh, approved the street closures for the, uh, Tree City Fall Festival, uh, for the parade. It's going to be September 17, September 18. So you know, the dates, uh, the fire chief came, we promoted three firefighters, uh, from probationary firefighters to privates basically. Chief talked to us, he got approval for the motivational, I guess, professional development speaking that he came to and talked to us tonight about. Uh, and then we also talked about the strategic plan for the fire department. Jeff Smith came and presented, uh, a review of the renewals for the pre-treatment permit, uh, renewals. And then, uh, the mayor came, we basically approved the purchase of furniture for the city hall after the remodel from office 360. We approved a municipal advisory, uh, engagement to talk, to basically reassess the bonds that we have right now on the police station to see when that money's going to be paid and maybe the best use of funds and once we pay those off. Then, what we've, uh, purchase of interior signs, uh, was approved as well.
Anything else from the council? Okay. This evening, we have a very, uh, high honor to offer. Chief Stermer, if you wouldn't mind coming up front here.
Sure.
Chief Stermer is a recent graduate of the, uh, Executive Fire Officer Program. It's the flagship for the National Fire Academy and provides senior fire officials with broad perspectives on various facets of fire and emergency medical service administration. And these courses and encompassing research explain how to exercise leadership when dealing with difficulties where you meet problems within our community. Chief Stermer has completed his courses of study and the applied research that are projects with the National Fire Academy. And under the authority granted in the 116th Congress of the United States of America, Chief Stermer has now been, uh, given the title of Executive Fire Officer. And for that, we are incredibly proud to have you as part of our team. And, uh, we could not be more happy to have you onboard.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, the council? If not, take a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Have a great evening.